Okay, I reconvene in the regular meeting at 8:20 PM. At this time, we will open up the podium for public comments. Public comments will be heard on agenda items only at this time. The Board of Education encourages public participation in school-related matters at board meetings. Any group or organization wishing to address the Board must first identify a single spokesperson. The presentation should be as brief as possible. Speakers will be permitted to speak for up to three minutes. The Board will not allow in public sessions... I changed the words on my last night. The Board will not allow public session discussions involving individual district personnel or students. All speakers are to conduct themselves civilly. Obscene language, libelous statements, threats of violence, and statements advocating racial, religious, or other forms of prejudice will not be tolerated. Persons making presentation at the board meeting will address their remarks to the President. They may address questions or comments to the Board members or other district officials only upon approval of the President. So, anyone that wants to come up and say anything, please come up and introduce yourselves.
Good evening. Opposites hate me a little bit. Lost my hair, lost my sight. Trustees, especially trustees Winfield and Robinson, congratulations on your seniority requirement from the Board. Thank you for your selfless service. Public service has its rewards and it certainly has its frustrations. Dr. Morel, the Administration, Ms. Pearson, and the Southampton community. My name is Sean Brand, and it is my honor to stand before you tonight as President of the Southampton Teachers Association. Moments ago, we recognized the careers and accomplishments of several remarkable members of our association. Their unwavering dedication to our students has left an indelible mark on our schools and our community. I feel privileged to have been able to serve as their President for the past fifteen years. Though not all here, Elizabeth Godfrey, Diane Guida, Jim Owen, Amy Lester, Georgina Hernandez, and Ricky Taylor, may good health, lasting happiness, and a deep sense of pride accompany you in this next chapter of your lives. You have fulfilled the highest calling of public service, shaping minds, inspiring hearts, and strengthening the community. Your legacy will continue to echo through the halls of our schools for years to come. While tonight is, in many ways, a celebration of the past, it also serves as a moment to look ahead. In that spirit, I stand here this evening cautiously optimistic. Yesterday, we accomplished more at the bargaining table in one session than we had throughout the five previous meetings. The Association had the opportunity to meet with Dr. Morel and Mr. Minio. We walked away hopeful that progress had been made. The conversation was less laborious without natural posturings of the attorneys. What we experienced was educators engaging in dialogue without needing to translate our jargon to attorneys who are not entirely fluent in the language of schools. I would like to thank Dr. Morel for her willingness to move the process in this direction. Equally, I would like to thank the Board for providing its blessing. What it suggests to us is that the Board recognizes something profoundly important, that at the heart of these negotiations are people, not just positions. When educators are given the space to speak directly with those who understand the day-to-day realities of our schools, we can find common ground rooted in mutual respect and shared purpose. It is difficult, if not impossible, for the human side of this process to come through when the conversation is filtered through a highly-paid attorney whose job is, by design, to shield and deflect. And tonight, it is that human side of that process that is truly on display. While we have gathered to celebrate the well-deserved retirements of our colleagues, a moment that is worthy of recognition in and of itself, the current state of contract negotiations has also drawn many of our members here this evening. Although the nature of negotiations requires confidentiality and discretion outside the table, we remain committed to keeping our members informed with general updates that reflect the direction of the process. At our general SDA meeting on May 20th, the status of negotiations was a central focus on our agenda. While I was unable to provide favorable reassurances at the time, I did remind the membership that there was still time left on the clock and that anything was possible before our current collective bargaining agreement expired on June 30th. Naturally, concerns mounted. Members are concerned about their own bottom line and what next year looks like, whether we have a contract or not. Their presence is a powerful reminder that beyond every salary cell and every budget line item, there is a name, a face, and a life devoted to service. Tonight is an opportunity for me to stand before the Board and convey the concerns of professionals who are chasing mortgages, paying for braces, and saving for college tuition. We are here to support the process and reaffirm our hope that yesterday was a step in the right direction. We remain hopeful that this momentum will carry us toward a successful and timely resolution, one that reflects the dedication, professionalism, and value of the educators who stand before you this evening. The multitude of members of our association present tonight is a reflection of the deep concern, unity, and shared commitment to ensuring that the educators of this district are treated with fairness and respect they deserve. Their presence underscores a simple truth: We are not only advocates for our students, but also one another. We, the Board, the Administration, and our Association face certain shared realities. Traffic on the East End is a relentless juggernaut, one that wears on people over time. The hours spent in a car take their toll, both physically and emotionally. Even Dr. Fernandez and Dr. Botcher ultimately made the difficult decision to take positions closer to home, a reality many of us can understand all too well. We know that the cost of living in Suffolk County, particularly on the East End, is making it nearly impossible for teachers to build a life and raise their families in and around our Southampton community. And so, we've become the school equivalent, we have become the school equivalent of basic Teachers come here, cut their teeth, and move on in search of better compensation and quality of life factors. Under the life of our soon-to-expire contract, we fell behind neighboring schools in the categories that made people want to stay despite the traffic. Under the same contract, we watched as the following teachers said their goodbyes: Nicole Tomei, Marissa Arias, Kelly Lattick, Chelsea Maningo, Victoria Vittolich, Christine Gill, Katie Shrek, Kristen Ray, Amanda Giopron, Gia Buxton, Christina Di Primo, Jackie Beauchamp, and Yesena Morales, educators who deem worthy of, we deem worthy of hiring and investing in, who will now celebrate their thirty years of service elsewhere. As the core beliefs of this district state, "Inspired teaching inspires learning," we must attract, develop, and retain the best staff to accomplish our mission. Quality education is worth the investment and requires sound fiscal management. Taxpayers deserve value for their financial support, and our people and their time are resources that lead to higher standards. Our decision-making must be based on collected data while also considering the impact on students and the district's overall functioning. Continuing to watch quality teachers move on to share their talents after working out their growing pains in Southampton is a tide we hope to turn with these negotiations. Their departures are not just losses, they are warnings. And for every colleague who leaves, there are others who remain steadfast in their commitment, yet quietly burdened by the question of whether they too should have left. Their choice to stay is courageous, but the fact that they wrestle with that choice is a call to action. These negotiations are not only about retention, they are about restoring hope, affirming value, and making it clear that Southampton is not just a place to start a career, but a place worth staying. And to one day, stand proudly before this Board, just as we witnessed this evening, to be honored not only for their years of service, but for the impact they made by choosing to stay. I thank you for the time and I apologize for it.
Can I thank you all for coming?
Can I just respond to Sean Brand on something?
Yes.
Okay. So, Dr. Morel came into this district last year. This is not about Dr. Morel, it's about this school district. Dr. Morel came into this school district last year to a mob mentality. April was an embarrassment to this district, to myself as someone who grew up here in Southampton. There have been people since day one, since before day one, that do not want to see Dr. Morel succeed, they don't want to see her continue. I could tell you that this, this union under Dr. Morel has never had a better opportunity to succeed and be cohesive with the superintendent and the members of the union than they have now. And I have not always seen eye-to-eye with Dr. Morel. And if you know me, I don't always see eye-to-eye with, I don't care whether you're Schittincock, black, brown, white, whatever you are, if we have a difference of opinion, I will express that. And I've expressed, we've had our differences with Dr. Morel, but I could tell you that if anyone wants this contract to work, and I can't speak about the contract as Mr. Brand stated, it's Dr. Morel. And if it doesn't work, it's because of some of those influences that don't want to see her succeed. And I think there's never been a better opportunity than today than to have this district move to higher places under Dr. Morel. And I just wanted to say that, and I wanted to thank Mr. Brand for having such a prepared and well-said speech.
Thank you. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments this evening on agenda items?
I don't know if it's an agenda item. I'm not sure, I'm not sure that it's an agenda item.
Okay, so we'll have a second round of comments towards the end that are not agenda items. Thank you. So, we're gonna move on then to the superintendent's report?
Thank you. At this time, under my report, I would like to have a discussion for approval of girls' flag football. I would like the presentation for Mr. Phillip and Mr. Minio. Thank you.
Okay. So, some of you might know, recently, probably within the past two years, girls' flag football became a Section 11 New York State public high school sport. And it's continuing to grow here in Suffolk County, probably one of the fastest-growing sports now for girls, not just here in Suffolk County or New York, probably nationwide. I think it's actually gonna be an Olympic sport in a couple of years. So, we did have a teacher who had some students that, she came to me and said, "I think I have some students that wanna know, how do we go about getting a flag football team?" So, I spoke with the teacher and said, you know, "See if they can go, put like a signup sheet or an interest sheet, and let's see how many girls are actually interested in doing it, and then, once we have a list and we see how many girls are interested, we can, we can move forward with the process." I said, "I would have to talk to Dr. Morel and Jean, and since it was not initially budgeted for the next year, what we could do to try to make it work." So, can you just go to... Yeah, so, right now in Section 11, there's thirty-four teams, thirty-four schools playing varsity flag football, and ten JV teams. And there's a lot of new teams coming in next year at both the JV and varsity level. So, like I said, we had about fifteen girls sign up, and, and I think it's gonna be more than that, to be honest with you, once, if it's approved and opened up. They had a signup sheet in the office for a little bit, and then I think they went around and, you know, reached out to friends or other, other girls, females that they knew that might be interested. So, to have a team, you only need about ten, between ten and fifteen to have a team to get started. I think it's a great opportunity for girls to play a new sport. Football's always been kind of a, a sport, you know, for the boys, and even though it's not tackle football, it still is football with a lot of the same concepts and the same enthusiasm and thrill of playing, playing the sport. So, you know, right now, we have four sports right now. This would give us five sports for the girls in the spring, and an opportunity to play, like I said, one of the fastest-growing sports for females. You know, a couple of challenges are, we do, we do have to find some field space. They don't play like the boys' football, like on a hundred-yard field, so it's a modified short field. So, whether we can use the turf for, for some of the games, I have to look into that, but, you know, I feel confident we can make it work. You know, we can find the space for practice, we can figure out where they're gonna play. You know, part of the challenge is we have three track teams, so when they have meets, the turf isn't able to be used, we have lacrosse teams up there. But I think they play sixteen games, so that would be eight home games. We'd have to, you know, and some schools are using grass fields, so, but, you know, we have the space out there, we just have to carve out a niche out there where we can find that. And then, you know, the question is, you know, we'd have to continue into the fall and see, and because a lot of those have played, it'd be great to have even a club or something before we actually start practice to start teaching concepts and teaching routes and how to backpedal and cover and those kinds of things. And it'll be growing pains, like in any new sport. I think whether we do the JV schedule, I was speaking to the guy from Sagem who's the Chair, so he said, "A lot of the JV teams are the larger schools that already have varsity teams." And so, he said, "You can do JV if you want, but we can also be a varsity team and play the C schools, which are the schools that are our size, with six teams and maybe playing that." So, that's something we would have to decide if we decide to move forward, if we wanna just play in the varsity smaller schools or, you know, jump in with the JV schedule. So, so, Dr. Morel and I, and Jean, we met just to go over the, the cost, the kind of approximate cost to add the program for next year. You probably have the information ready, it's up there on the board, but, you know, what we're talking about is, there's two officials per home game, you see the, what the rate is per official per game. Transportation is just an approximate, with eight away games, three hundred dollars or whatever, you know, I could talk to Sam and finalize that, just rough estimates. We would have to have somebody like we do for all the other varsity sports, somebody running a clock or keeping track of the score, a timer scorer. The coaches, that would have to probably be part of the negotiation, where they would fall in the coaching line. You know, I know we're, we're trying to, I think, go into different levels now, or a different format with, with coaching?
Yeah, I read some preliminary numbers, so, the coaches, I believe you would need a head coach and assistant coach, so I would say between the two of them, it's about ten thousand dollars.
Okay. It is a little, you know, that, that I think could be fluid and it could change, you know, whether it's JV or varsity, but just, just rough numbers approximately to get started. We would, I was looking to purchase at least twenty-five uniforms, home and away. Again, just, it's always good to have extra uniforms, just because you, you never get the sizes right, so it's just good to have extras, just, just, just in case. Maybe we get twenty-five girls and we're a little more if we get that kind of a turnout. So, it's not a huge, I guess it depends on, when you talk about a huge investment, you know, for, you know, twenty thousand dollars, we can, we can get the program up and running. It's a lot cheaper than football, we don't have to buy helmets, we don't have to buy shoulder pads, you know, we're buying just the flags and the balls and the jerseys and the shorts. And again, I think, you know, we need to listen to the kids, like we talked about, and if there is an interest and there is enough interest, why not give them a chance to play? So, I don't know if you have any questions?
Well, I just wanted to ask Jean, because we talked about where this funding might come from, considering, yeah.
Initially, we spoke about the possibility of some sports not having enough kids to run, so you might have it in your budget already.
Right, so, with some of the coaching positions, I budget for them every year, junior high JV varsity, and this year, we didn't have JV softball, we didn't have junior high lacrosse, we didn't have JV, you know, so there's, there's always, seems like there's always a, a sport with a level that we're not able to get enough kids to play that sport, so that could be a possibility again for next year. I always fund all the position, coaching positions, just in case you never know what the turnout's gonna be every year. But we typically do have two or three sports that don't have enough students to play, and we end up holding the team.
What are the other sports in the spring?
So, we have softball, girls' track, girls' golf, and girls' lacrosse. Those are the four, and then flag would be five.
Thank you.
I just forgot, yeah, I, I actually ran into a group of high school girls coming back from East Hampton, they went to go see a flag football game, because East Hampton has this, and they seemed pretty, like, enthusiastic and excited about it. So, I, I see the cost, I know that some of these sports, sometimes we don't have JV teams, we don't, some, some of these teams that we have set up through varsity will maybe not be varsity. I, I think, I'd be okay with these awareness, with the excitement that those girls had for it, and I think you could probably fund the money inside the, the budget with some of the teams that don't have it in their budgets for every year. That would just my, I'm not jeans, I'm not crunching numbers, and I, I think it's...
We have a coach that don't take the salary.
Yeah, that saves a... That saves about nine grand.
Normally, when I start getting emails from the students, I know that there's a lot of interest. I try and explore this, and so, they are contacting me, and there's fifteen now signed up, but I think once they find out that it's open, you may see twenty-five, they creep up to twenty-five, and I know when there's an interest like that, that's a way to attach our kids to the school even more. And so, I'm very interested in having the Board approve this for us. Thank you.
I went to, my niece plays at Eastport Southmane flag football, and I went to my first game this year, and I didn't know what to expect. I was very impressed. I mean, thirty-four yard passes down the field, very impressive, very, a lot of skill, a lot went into it, you could tell, like, you know, they have a big program up there. I'm all for it, I think it'll get new girls interested in sports that weren't interested in the past. I saw a flag football commercial on a female, flag football commercial on the Super Bowl last year during halftime. It's, it's definitely growing, it's another opportunity to have student athletes, more scholarships available for them if they, you know, move on to college. I love it.
And I think too, right, we currently have an SYA flag program, and I know we do have some girls that participate in that. And obviously too, if we're gonna move in that direction, I, I believe we're offering a sport that we should put that into our elementary and middle school phys ed programs so that we're teaching those skills at that level, so when they get to high school eligible to play, they're familiar with how flag football works, and, and running routes, and what's a slant, and what's a curl, and what's a dig, and what's a, what's a fade, and, and all that kind of stuff. So, you know, we'll put that into our PE program as well.
Yeah, sorry.
Just a quick question. Actually, what I was gonna ask, if you do do it in P A E, do you do it in high school P A?
Middle school, high school a little bit, but it's been mostly like boy, you know, it's not really co-ed, they do it separate, but you really have to start before high school, you know, you really, since there's not really like a little league, so we have to teach those skills in group P D.
So, this, we have four sports in the spring, and we didn't have JV softball this year. I'm just worried about the impact of creating another team on the other existing teams already. Do we, is there any, have you done any study looking at, are these girls gonna take away from other programs?
There might be a couple of girls that might be coming. We did have a big turnout for junior high softball with about twenty girls, which was great. You know, the reality with girls' lacrosse is, we talked about going back to JV after trying varsity. The hard part is, is, you know, we've been trying to work with Hampton Bay to even just put a youth lacrosse program together, and the number's just, it's just hard, you know, when you, our skill level is so far behind when we're playing these schools that there's, you know, six, seven, eight, nine, ten years old, they're already playing lacrosse for five years with their stick skills. So, you know, whether lacrosse can survive or not, I mean, the reality is too, we may have to also start looking to combine with Hampton Bay with some sports if we're gonna sustain them, just like we do with the boys' lacrosse program. Hampton Bay didn't have a junior high softball team this year, we didn't have a JV, I mean, depending on the numbers, we have to start thinking if we wanna continue those programs, we may have to, to look at combining as an alternative to preserve that program for our kids to play.
Is there interest in combining girls' flag football with...
I haven't put it out there yet, but it's just like when we started girls' golf, I put it out to Hampton Bay, Pearson, we got Pearson and Ross that decided, East Hampton, Pearson and Ross were the only two that decided, you know, I could put that out as well if we want to bridge Hampton or Pearson or Hampton Bay, although they might already be going to East Hampton, probably is my guess, since they already have a team, I'm guessing, since they combined with East Hampton for most of the sports. But Hampton Bay could be a possibility if they wanted to, to jump in.
Yeah, I like the idea of, of having that opportunity for students, I just don't wanna see existing programs, we're spread thin as it is.
Yeah, I mean, that's certainly, you know, we've, we've had those discussions about, you know, is it gonna pull to the, to the point where we're, we're losing teams, you know? Track always seems to have a lot, you know, they have forty girls typically, but maybe two or three may go, maybe five, I, you know, it's hard to say, but if that's what their desire is, shouldn't we try to give them that opportunity instead of saying, you know, if, if there's a change in the interest, right, we have to be flexible and start to move with what the kids are telling us, like, if they're like, "Hey, a lot of girls want flag," and, and maybe something...
What is that interest?
The interest?
Yeah.
Right now, there was about fifteen or so girls that signed up, that, that signed and said, you know, they definitely wanna play. But again, I don't know that it was really promoted to the entire school, I don't think we put like a signup in phys ed or parents, you know, we just kinda had the girls go around and talk to their friends in the cafeteria or whatever and say, "Hey, we wanna get a team of you interested." So, it could be, could be bigger than that.
Yeah, just, just to add on that, that's correct. So, we had, I had a couple of girls come and visit me for, for that initial pitch, and I asked the same question, "What's the interest?" And I go, "It's a lot, so just go out and see if you can get some names on form and see what it looks like," and within a couple of days, not even, they, and again, without mass kind of promotion, we had a full sheet of names. So, the, the, I, I believe the interest was there, the girls seemed really passionate. Definitely, I agree with you, Ruth, but we're, we're seeing some interest shift as new, new opportunities arise, and same thing as I was speaking to Mr. Phillips, when the girl, the girls are coming with such a passion. So, I think it would be, when, when kids are coming and kids are passionate, and they wanna say, "I wanna be here for that," it's so important for us to act on that, so.
The other thing you might have is that, some of the students, this is a new sport to them, some of the girls, some of them may already feel like with the other sports, they didn't start when they were in elementary school and, you know, early on, and they're already behind the eight, well, this is a new sport, so everyone's on the same, new for this school, everyone's on the same plane, so it might bring... The other question I have for you Darren is, how many, so we have, what do we have, about two-hundred-and-fifty girls in the high school?
A little bit more.
A little bit more? A little bit more?
I have to look.
Okay, okay. So how many, you know, girls are playing those sports in the, in the, in the springtime out of those two hundred and fifty? So you may have a whole new pool of girls, is what I'm saying, that would be interested in coming out.
Probably right now less than a hundred. You know, golf is sixteen. I think softball was only about their twelve or thirteen this year without the JV. Track was about forty. Girls lacrosse started with about twenty-five and ended with about seventeen. So, you know.
I just want to say also, this is a spring sport, right? So we still have the whole year to pitch it, to gain skills, to maybe introduce it more.
Like I was saying, maybe start a club or intramural prior to that just to get them a little head start before the season officially starts. And I will say too, probably when Zach was in school, we actually used to have during homecoming weekend, Zach, right? We used to have the girls play the powder club football game at halftime and the, the boys would coach the team and it was a home run, right?
That was, that was after, man. We were, we were serious about football. Yeah, it's sort of like, we have to shift, you know, to shifting demographic sports. You know, like a few years ago, we added girls golf and we've gone four years with girls golf and four years undefeated with girls golf. You know, so I think right now this flag football is kind of a new cool thing. It does have a youth program with the SYA I know, and S Y S also has a flag football league. My son does it, loves it. And there's a good amount of girls out there running around. So it's something that they can do. You know, some of the sports we have that we don't have youth programs for in this community. And I think that's kind of held them back over the last twenty years and going and out. So I think this is just kind of a shift and I don't think this really affects the track. And we have the, we also passed dual participation this year. So this would count as a team sport and an individual sport. And anybody that wanted to run track and have the grades could also do flag football as well. So.
Zach, we had a flag football as well. My son was on it. Same thing, half the team were girls and they were just, I mean, as excited and phenomenal and some of the best players on the team. So, yeah.
And I do have to look into, I think when it was first starting here, there was grants either from the jet. There was definitely grant money that they were putting out for new teams. So I will look into that as well and see if there's anything still available for, for new teams or we can find some grant money.
Is there a, a motion from us to explore this, like how you? Okay, all right. And I'll, yeah, just shift the button.
Just need your blood.
I just need the blessing or endorsement that I can move forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next thing, my enrollment report stays the same. I would just say that it, I'll have more in detail enrollment report on July one, but our numbers still stand at twelve seventy-two with no losses, zero losses at this time. So twelve seventy-two. Thank you. And then I just want to take this moment to say thank you to our outgoing school board members. Madam.
I'm gonna miss you. Madam President, thank you. Now you had eight years of service here in the.
From my favorite jeans.
And thank you for managing the first year superintendent. And I just wish you all the best. And I know you're going to enjoy your family. I know that was important to you. And so I just thank you for this year. And I'm glad now that you can enjoy time with your family. And thus wishes to you. To Madam Vice President, thank you for your four years of service and for dealing with this first year superintendent and all my woes. And thanks for being a shoulder, listening to my part, my, my views and not, you know, without judgment. And I just, I'm gonna miss you as well. And I just thank you. And I know you can enjoy time with, you know, you and Julie. I think he's getting, every time I see him, he gets happier and happier. He's gonna have his life back a little time. So thank you for everything and enjoy time with your family.
Thank you, Dr. Morel.
Thanks for your service.
First this year.
Thank you.
Everybody at this table for your collaboration. And everybody in this district for all your work. There's some huge important jobs you all do. Thank you. And I've learned a lot from everyone.
And this is on behalf of the executive team.
Thank you, executive team.
And that's my report. Thank you.
Okay, well, we'll move on to administrator reports. Jean, for the last time, I ask you, would you like to present to us?
Yeah, it's going to be different. We haven't had the audit and finance committee scheduled for next Monday. I believe there's only one financial item, which is a transfer. So I don't have anything at, at the moment unless you have a question about that one.
Thank you. Dr. Botcher?
I just wanted to let the board know that our district's school improvement team, the SCAP and D CIP team met for the last time on June tenth. At that meeting, we were able to finalize our goals and strategies. Currently, the draft is with Dr. Morel, Mr. Benson, myself to really look at and to finalize it and send to the state and then update the community. So I just want to thank the team of educators and parents that really made this possible because, you know, there were about twenty-five people who came together each time and really worked hard. There was a lot of brain sweat and a lot of conversation and a lot of great stuff. So I just want to thank them publicly. And also last week, Dr. Zahn and I had the opportunity to celebrate Dr. Todd Hill, which you saw in Dr. Morel's newsletter. But we went to Giorgio's invading hollow and Dr. Todd Hill was presented a surprise recognition as East End Counselors Administrator of the Year. So.
You're so high in the morning.
Yeah. She was actually nominated by her counselors, which I think alone speaks tremendous volume that she's just, has expanded our guidance department into something we couldn't have even imagined and really built a cohesive department that supports students from eight to twelve. So it's amazing. And this district is so lucky to have her because she has become an integral part of this community so quickly. And we're so blessed to have you.
Okay, committee reports. As Mr. Ringo said, the fine audit and finance is meeting on the twenty-third. The personnel committee met on June tenth and went through everybody that is up for appointment approval tonight. There's no new merger committee report. The policy committee met on June fourth. We have a policy on for second reading this evening. May I have a motion to review policy ninety-two forty recruiting and hiring and policy ninety-two forty R recruitment and selection regulations where second reading is presented? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So carried. May I have a motion to review policy fifty-six ninety-five students and personal electronic devices and policy fifty-two, fifty, sorry, forty-five twenty-six district computer cell phone network and internet use policy faculty, staff and students for the first reading is presented? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? So carried. I did actually want to ask if, are these policies, I guess not, not going to the new board members yet, right? For review? They would just be at the, the third reading and the second reading, right?
I'm not sure what your question is.
Like, are they getting to see these policies?
Just like they're.
Okay, all right. I couldn't remember. Policies currently under committee review, policy ninety-two forty recruiting and hiring, policy ninety-two forty R recruitment and selection regulation, policy fifty-six ninety-five student and personal electronic devices, policies slated for committee review, policy forty-five thirty-one field trips and excursions, policy forty-five thirty-one R field trips regulation, policy forty-five thirty-one E point one field trips exhibit district field trip approval form, policy forty-five thirty-one E point two field trips exhibit parent approval form, policy forty-five thirty-one E point three field trips exhibit checklist of response, policy fifty-three hundred code of conduct, policy fifty-four twenty student health services, policy fifty-four twenty R student health services regulations, policy sixty-six forty inventories, policy eighty-four fourteen point six idling prohibition for buses and other school vehicles. Are there any consent agenda items from twelve oh one through twelve point two one that any member wishes to discuss or has questions about? I will hold out consent agenda twelve point two one for separate action with a roll call vote. Are there any other consent agenda items from twelve oh one through twelve point two one that any member wishes to hold out for separate action? May I have a motion to approve consent agenda items twelve oh one through twelve point two one as presented in the agenda? Twelve point two zero, twelve point two zero as presented in the agenda?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So carried. May I have a motion to approve consent agenda items twelve point two one to approve amendment number one to con, to contract the superintendent of schools as presented in the agenda with a roll call vote?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Kara Conklin-Wainfield?
Yes.
Robert Zachary-Hetling?
Yes.
Boni Proctor?
Yeah.
Jacqueline Robinson?
Yes.
Sunny Sherwood-Dudley?
Yes.
Jermaine O'Smith?
Yes.
And Ruthie Whitegun?
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve financial item thirteen oh one, a budget transfer from various accounts to account A point two one one oh point five zero 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 point four oh in the total amount of twenty-three thousand eight hundred and twenty-two dollars for sensory room as presented?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in, any discussion? Where's this, which, for which building is this? This, S I C. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So carried. Are there any personnel items from fourteen oh one, one through six that any member wishes to discuss or has questions about? Are there any personnel items fourteen oh one, one through six that any member wishes to hold out for separate action? May I have a motion to approve personnel items fourteen oh one, one through six as presented in the agenda?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So carried. Are there any personnel items from fourteen oh two, seven through ninety-nine that any member wishes to discuss or has questions about? Are there any personnel items from fourteen oh two, seven through ninety-nine that any member wishes to hold out for separate action?
Eighty-six.
May I have a motion to approve personnel items fourteen oh two, seven through eighty-five and eighty-seven through ninety-nine as presented in the agenda? Okay, you got that? Second? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So carried. May I have a motion to approve personnel item fourteen oh two eighty-six, eighty-six as presented in the agenda? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? So carried. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the June third, twenty twenty-five regular meeting as presented?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So carried. Okay, we're at our second round of public comments. Public comments will be heard at this time. The Board of Education encourages public participation in school-related matters at board meetings. Any group or organization wishing to address the board must first identify a single spokesperson. The presentation should be as brief as possible. Speakers will be permitted to speak for up to three minutes. The board will not allow in public session discussions involving individual district personnel or students. All speakers are to conduct themselves civilly, civilly, obscene language, libelous statements, threats of violence and statements advocating racial, religious or other forms of prejudice will not be tolerated. Persons making presentations at the board meeting will address remarks to the president. They may direct questions or comments to board members or other district officials only upon approval of the president. Hello, please tell us your name.
My name is Wendy Zapata. And who knows me, knows that I don't like to speak in public, maybe because of my accent, but anyway, I'm gonna do it anyway because it's important. And today, we say goodbye, however, it's only a few later, to two great administrators, Dr. Jamie Butcher and Dr. Nicole Fernandez. I want to thank you both for the years you dedicate to our school district, to our community, and above all, to each of our children. Thank you for being the first to arrive at the school and the last to leave, regardless the traffic and distance, dedicating endless hours of work serving all our children equally. Nicole, it has been a real honor to have been your secretary these past years. Thank you because together with Jamie, you brought the elementary school to a much higher level of learning than many other school districts. Your dedication and leadership are reflected in the love of each child has for reading when they call out to, to you in the hallways, Dr. Fernandez, I reached my goal in I already. Or I can read the whole book now. That my dear friend is called Love and Passion for Your Profession. Love for your school and your community and for that and for a million other things, we will be forever grateful to you. We are going to miss you immensely. Dr. Botcher, my dear friend. It has been an honor to have been your secretary for almost six years. I was lucky to get to know you and to learn what work is to me, what unconditional love for others looks like and how incredibly, incredible well-prepared you are to take on any position you are offered. The new school district you are going to have no idea what a remarkable person they are. Wherever you go, you will continue to make a difference and leave your mark filled with love. Thank you, dear friend, for being present, for never missing an event, being in elementary school, middle school or high school. Because every student you see grown up didn't just look for the parents in the auditorium. They look for you because they knew you will always be there because you always gave them confidence and strength to follow the truth. Thank you for being an excellent role model for every member of this community, especially my daughter and the class of twenty twenty-eight. Thank you for your kindness and respect towards others. You, Mara, taking with you a very large piece of South Hampton in your heart and South Hampton gives a deep gratitude for everything you give us. On behalf of all of us who love you and deeply respect you, we wish you the greatest success. And as a member of this community, I dare say that the doors of South Hampton will always be open to you. Just in our hearts. Thank you. Thank you. I thought you were proud.
I might never go home, my husband's enough for tonight.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Corey Teigen. I am a teacher in another district and have been a member of Southampton for 25 years. I appreciate, let me start with saying, I appreciate all of the work that each of you have given to this school district, and I do not envy the job that you have. I am respectfully expressing my concerns regarding some decisions being made in the intermediate school with regards to the Special Education Department. I was informed that the sixth grade special education teacher is, one of them, is resigning this year and will not be replaced for next year. Instead, half of the student body, special education department children will be with one ICT special education teacher during the school day, while the other half of the special education children in the sixth grade will be met with a hodgepodge of different special education teachers that will be pushed into the classroom. As a parent of a special education child, I want to raise my concern. This population is slow to trust. They already have so many problems stacked against them, just getting through their day. I would like for you to reconsider hiring another special education teacher to cover these children, giving them one person, a one point of contact. I'm not sure what the budgetary constraints would be. I know our budget passed with overwhelming numbers this year and every year that we've been in district. There's never been a case where there wasn't funding. I'd like to point out that while one section of the sixth grade will be well-tended, the other section will not. People fall through the cracks, these children. Like I said, they are slow to trust. They perform better when they have a relationship and a rapport with someone. I've watched this in my own child for years. This school district has shown me that you value many different walks of life, and I would like to see that happen for this next year. There's lots of people in our area that are willing to step into this role. So I, I know it's not a matter of finding the personnel. There is a rise in the special education population. I know the rest of our numbers are dropping. I work in every district, we have the same problem. But the special education children numbers are not dropping at all. And I just want you to have that thought before you make your decisions coming with your behavioral decision.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hey. I just want to say congratulations to everyone that's retiring for better days. Okay. Now, I just want to say that here we go again. Children are leaving. Find me other places to go. Find me better places. Doing their own things. I'm just pretending I'm a mother and I'm, and I'm just saying, children grow up and they go different places and everything. But I've, I've been here many years and I've seen children come and children go. It's okay. But it's always, um, um, good as soon. You build relationships and you learn to love and trust and hope for the best. And so I just want to congratulate everyone that's retiring, everyone that's leaving, and do what you do best. Love. And can't tell you anything greater. Love family, love friends, love children. Let love be your driving force.
Thank you, Jackie. Is there anyone else that would like to make public comments today? We are going to move on to new business items, not on the agenda. You have something new? Mr. Edley?
Two things, spare with me for a second. I just wanted to, I just wanted to recognize the kids that are all graduating next week to moving on. So I wanted to recognize my, my baseball seniors, the Aiden that I had and stuff, and just kind of, you know, give representation of the whole team. So the whole team ended up with an 88 total GPA for the season. Twelve of our 17, twelve of our 16 kids were in the National Honor Society. I have eight kids that are graduating this year. Seven of them are magna cum laude or more between them. They're all going to unbelievable colleges. So I got Tommy Pope here, and he's going to St. John's. Daniel McDonald's going to Roger Williams. Daniel Colombo is going to Tennessee. Jackson Romaco is going to Northeastern. Burke Dunn is going to Rollins, he's going to Rollins, I'm not sure. Travis Krenberg's going to Stetson. Elijah Bell is going to Cornell. And then the last one, Cameron, so there's actually he enlisted in Murray, so he's going to serve our country. So I'm very proud of those eight kids. And you play sports, you think it's everything, but it's really about what happens going forward. So I appreciate what they do in high school, appreciate the grades and stuff, and that's an important thing, to make sure these kids are realizing, moving on, there's something else there. I also have two people that I, so I know this can be a thankless job. Very thankless, just the pay sucks, right? Being on the board, it's a lot of work. I've had a lot of pleasure with, with working with you, Jackie and Kara, the last year. So you guys call me a lot, and I know, being the president and vice president, it's a lot more. And you guys do phone calls, you deal with the issues, and so. So my daughter Haley wanted to make you guys little Mariner bracelets to say that you guys are appreciated and thank you, that they see the work you do. And I know sometimes everybody is not always happy with every decision that gets made and stuff, but I think both you guys had the most interest, the best interest of the community at heart. So they're, they're little anchors on them. So she was out making them last night for you guys. So that's for you guys. I, we have another gift for you in the car, but I can't bring it.
Meeting's adjourned. So I would like to thank the First Act Club from the elementary school that made us these beautiful little thank you cards. It's very sweet. And as always, having students here tonight, everybody knows that's my favorite thing. And I'm not going to get upset. But eight years on the board, six years of PTA, anyway. For the four of my eight years on the board, I've had the pleasure of sitting next to Amy on my left side. And many people have a right-hand man. Well, I have a left-hand woman. And Amy, this is for you with all of my gratitude, for everything that you've done for keeping my tabs in place in the book and just making me know where I'm supposed to be during our meeting. So thank you very much. Thank you. He's only got three fingers by design. Is there any else, any?
So it's customary, at the conclusion of the board member service, that a proclamation is rendered and read. So I'm gonna read it now. Proclamation. Whereas Mrs. Jacqueline Robinson began her service to the Southampton Union Free School District Board of Education on July 1, 2017, and has served as a trustee with dedication and distinction for the past eight years. And whereas she has served the Board of Education and community with administrators, teachers, and staff while continuing the educational traditions of the Southampton Union Free School District, and always setting the standards to a higher level. And whereas she has attended well over 176 Board of Education meetings, served one term as Vice President of the Board of Education, served four terms as the President of the Board of Education, and has served as a member of various committees, including Audit and Finance, Facilities, Personnel, Communications, Special Education, Code of Conduct, Bilinguality, and Policy Committees, spending many hours away from her family on the district's behalf, and has received and read thousands of texts, emails, and pages of reports and documents for countless hours during the past eight years. And whereas she has supported all endeavors that benefited all students in our district and provided invaluable knowledge as a mother, a lifelong community volunteer, and an alumna of Southampton High School. Now therefore, on this 17th day of June in the 249th year of the Independence of the United States of America, by the action of the Board of Education on behalf of the district and the community, we honor Mrs. Jacqueline Robinson by offering her praise and a heartfelt thank you for eight years of dedicated service. By action of the Board of Education, I set my hand to this proclamation on the 17th day of June 2025. Kara Conklin-Wingfield, Vice President, Board of Education.
Whereas Mrs. Kara Conklin-Wingfield began her service to the Southampton Union Free School District's Board of Education on July 1, 2021, and has served as a trustee with dedication and distinction for the past four years. And whereas she has served the Board of Education, the community, community with administrators, teachers, and staff while continuing the educational traditions of the Southampton Union Free School District and always setting the standards to a higher level. And whereas she has attended well over 88 Board of Education meetings, served one term as Vice President of the Board, has served as a member of various committees, including Audit and Finance, Personnel, Wellness, Communications, Special Education, Facilities, and merger committees, spending many hours away from her family on the district's behalf, and has received and read thousands of texts, emails, and pages of reports and documents for countless hours during the past four years. And is the 2025 NSSBA School Board Service Awardee. And whereas she has supported all endeavors that benefited all students in our district and provided invaluable knowledge as a mother, a champion of arts education, and a community advocate for all children. Now therefore, on the 17th day of June in the 249th year of the Independence of the United States of America, by the action of the Board of Education on behalf of the district and the community, we honor Mrs. Kara Conklin-Wingfield by offering her praise and a heartfelt thank you for four years of dedicated service. By action of the Board, I set my hand to this proclamation on the 17th day of June 2025. Thank you, everybody. It truly has been a pleasure serving on the board. I've met a lot of really great people, and I'm not going to cry this morning, so I'll just say thank you to everybody that has supported me, my family. And they're probably going to be sorry I didn't run again, because now I'm going to be home a lot more. Anyway, I can do more baking, yes, I can do lots more baking. So we need to go back to executive session for 15 minutes. So may I have a motion to move into an executive session at 9:25 PM to discuss the employment history of particular people that have made the confidentialized decision? Sunhee?
Second.
Tara? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So carried. All right, so.